All right, it's seven o'clock. I'll call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order. We'll begin today with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman James Godbout.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
We'll begin with special presentations and announcements. Today we have some words from Aubrey Bourbon, our Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, members of the council. Just wanted to provide you all with a brief update on where we stand today with our small business relief grants under the Westland Carriage Program. The application window is closed and we have made the final determinations on grant awards. So we have awarded forty-eight Westland businesses, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars total. The average grant amount was around five thousand dollars. So first, we'd just like to thank Councilman McDermott and Westland resident Dwayne Walker for volunteering to serve on the review committee along with me to help. We went through each application and really tried to analyze all the information we had to make the best determination for each business. And last week, we met with twenty business owners and next week, or I'm sorry, this week, we are, my goal is to meet with the rest of the applicants and the awardees so that we can get all the checks out to businesses by the middle of next week. So I'm really happy with that turnaround. I think just the feedback I've been getting has been very positive that we were able to get this program up and running and get the funds to the businesses very quickly. Just as a reminder, the other two programs that were established under this Westland Carriage Program are still up and running. So businesses and residents who are having difficulty securing PPE can go to our website and apply there. And there's also still funding for individuals who are in need of rent and mortgage assistance under that program as well. And I'm hoping that the city council will touch on this in their comments, but Wayne County has also opened up a grant. And so at this time, since ours is closed, anyone that is reaching out to us, we are trying to steer towards that Wayne County grant. They're awarding up to ten thousand dollars. They've approved or allocated fifty million dollars to award to Wayne County businesses. So we certainly want everyone to take advantage of that. And if anyone needs my assistance with that application process, they can definitely reach out to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aubrey. At this time, we'll open up to questions or input on the agenda from the public. If you have any questions regarding the agenda, this is your time. So these are agenda items only. I have a Mr. Edward Pruitt.
Hello, this is Pastor Edward Pruitt here. Through the chair to the city clerk LeBlanc. Oh, I have a few questions here. The first one is, I'm talking about the agenda item for deputy clerk hiring. And the question that I have is, with this position that you have to be filled, have you posted this position publicly?
No.
Oh, why haven't, hasn't it been posted publicly?
Reason it hasn't been posted publicly is that I've utilized resources through the city clerk field, so to speak, to initially go out to seek candidates that might be appropriate for the position. And failing that, decided to turn to an internal city of Westland employee.
Do you not think if publicly posted, that members in the community who may have a desire to contend for that position have the appropriate or even superior qualifications?
None that I'm aware.
So wouldn't it be in the best interest of the city so that the best qualified person would be in place? Wouldn't that be to publicly post it?
I'd ask you to ask or restate that question. I'm not sure that I understood it.
Okay, I'll ask it this way. Not publicly posting it demonstrates, in my eyes, an issue with transparency and equal opportunity. Do you not think that the community itself has the resources or people who would be qualified enough, if not in superiority to the candidate that you have chosen? Do you not think that the community has that out there?
I believe that members of the community that possess this type of experience would have made an impression on the office over the course of many years and that we will be selecting the best suitable candidate.
Okay, and then I noticed that in the charter, it says that employees do not have to be Westland citizens. So publicly posting that could create an avenue where you can be aware to that. It's a concern of mine that is not being posted. Are you an elected official?
I am.
So your job was publicly posted?
Indeed, it was.
So we believe as people, as citizens, that it is only fair and equitable and transparent that this be posted. Do you not think a temporary filling before the election, because I understand that election is coming up, a temporary filling by the person you've chosen would be good? And then have a fair and transparent interview process after the election?
So I think we're giving up to our time. Mr. Clerk, I think if you want to continue addressing, you can do it during the agenda item. Is that all right?
Yes, sir. Is that not part of my time? My time stops when he speaks?
It's, it's pretty hard for me to stop and start and stop and start. And usually how this works, I mean, usually is you ask your questions and then allows, we don't do the back and forth thing because it causes some issues and some difficulty. So usually what we do is we allow the individual who had the question to be answered during that specific agenda item.
So since it's difficult for you, I do apologize. Can he answer that question and then I'm done?
Sure. Mr. Clerk, are you willing to respond to that?
I believe that, that the person who would best fill the position has been selected. What I'm asking the council for today is approval to pay that person less money than they would ordinarily receive. I'm not asking for permission to hire the person.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any other questions on the agenda from the public? Are there any other questions? Final call. Are there any other questions on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move over to the consent calendar. Is there a mo?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion?
I have discussion, President.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. I'd like to move item P to new business, one A.
There's a motion to move item P to new business. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Green, you have your hand raised. Do you have discussion on this motion to move the agenda item? I just want to make sure I didn't miss you.
No, I don't, my, my discussion is, is not regarding the motion.
Understood. Well, it's a standby. I'll get right to you after this. Is there any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving back to the original motion, I see Councilwoman Green's hand is raised for the other question on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Council President. My question is through to the chair to whomever it is regarding line item D. K and B Asphalt is a lot cheaper than the bid that came in for, I don't know if this is pronounced Bidagary Contractors, they were actually a lot less expensive for the same work. So my question is, will the goal of the city be to utilize K and B Asphalt as our primary contractor as much as possible for a cost-saving measure and then only utilize Bidagary Contractors as a secondary option since the city has presented a recommendation to select both of these companies?
Ramsey, if you got, you want to answer that? I can only see your outline, by the way. The sun behind you.
Yeah, I know. Through the chair, yes, because I have better reception that way, I guess, you know. So, so through the chair, I'd like to answer Councilwoman Green's question regarding the propos, about the item on the agenda for K and B and Bidagary. Yes, Councilwoman Green, K and B will be our primary contractor to do all the work regarding asphalt because they are, they are asphalt contractors and Bidagary will be the secondary one. And this is for the reason that sometimes, like, like especially like after the, the winter season, we have multiple water main breaks throughout the city. And we will be able to use a second contractor to help us repair all these sections where we have the water main breaks. But, but K and B are our primary contractor in this bit.
Thank you, Ramsey.
You're welcome.
All right, is there any other discussion from the consent calendar? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The following consent calendar items have been approved by council. Minutes of the regular meeting held June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty at six P M. Minutes of the study session held, I'm sorry, that's a regular meeting held June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Minutes of the study session held June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty at six P M. Request from Lutheran High School, three-three-three-zero-zero, Cowan Road, to conduct their annual homecoming parade Friday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty at five-thirty P M. Starting in the back of the high school and proceeding south on Farmington Road, west on Cowan Road, turning right into the parking lot and to request police assistance to block traffic during the parade. Approval of bid for asphalt repair and maintenance services to K and B Asphalt Company and Bidagary Contractors Incorporated for an additional two-year period. Approval of bid for infrastructure, for facility, infrastructure improvement projects to sole bidder Site Logic Incorporated, amount not to exceed thirty thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of professional services agreement with N A I A S Security LLC for city hall security guard services. The agreement is for a period of one year, commencing immediately and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Adoption of resolution accepting Nankin Mills Village, three-five-nine-five-one Joy Road, long-term maintenance of stormwater management system and corresponding maintenance agreement executed by the developer. And the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County to utilize village funding from fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars for playground equipment at Hubbard Park. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Approval of subscription renewal for the city's mobile application, Westland Click and Fix, in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Approval of Bureau of Justice grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars for the Westland Police Department. Introduction of ordinance one-seven-seven-A-three, in ordinance to amend the Westland City Code by amending section one-ten-dash-two-point-one to rescind a temporary moratorium on applications for permits or licenses to establish new massage parlors. Adoption of ordinance one-seven-seven-A-two, in ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Westland by amending article seven entitled Massage Parlors. Adoption of ordinance two-forty-eight-A-nine-six, in ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city, city of Westland by amending sections one-ten-nine-point-six of article nine, chapter one-ten, entitled C B three, General Commercial Business District. Adoption of ordinance two-forty-eight-A-nine-seven, in ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Westland by amending section one-ten-dot-ten-dot-three of article nine of chapter one-ten, entitled Light Industrial District. Adoption of land resolution, land division resolution at three-seven-five-five-zero Cherry Hill Road, north side of Cherry Hill, west of Newburgh. This is planning department number one-eight-eight-four-A. The last item approved on the consent calendar, approval of the extension of the two thousand and twenty summer tax payments to extend until August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Moving to item, new business, one A. Adoption of land division resolution, parcel number zero-zero-seven-nine-nine-zero-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-zero, Wayne County Land Bank. This is the south side of Ann Arbor Trail, east of Merriman, planning department number two-two-three-three.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that I will not be in support for the same reasons that I discussed at the last time this was on our agenda.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Councilwoman Green.
Through the chair to Councilman Hersberg, if you will, can you state for the record why you are in opposition of this line item, please? Thank you.
Sure. I don't, I don't have the plan in front of me, but when it did come out, I'm not sure if you received some of the emails from some residents. I know I got some. This is behind Hawthorne Valley, the neighborhood. I believe the street's called Ledge Cliff in the back. A lot of residents there, they bought, they paid a premium for their homes to back up to the golf course, which it was a golf course at one time. It's a nature preserve over there. And I, I think I stated at the last council meeting that we just want to, we want to keep a good number of homes in town that have that appeal. We're not building a lot of new homes that have an appeal where you can have nature in your backyard. That and the protest from neighboring residents. I don't want to see a, a development encroach on the back of their homes. Part of it was city-owned property for quite a time. And I know a lot of those residents, they were cutting the grass behind their fence. They were cutting the grass on city property, working to maintain it the best they could. So I, I just got to stand with residents on that street. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Are we all set, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I just wanted to add for the record, the item that Peter, or excuse me, Councilman Hersberg moved, I was not contacted by any residents, which is regretful because I have nothing that would prevent me. No email, no testimony, no contact from residents that would prevent me from supporting this based on the information that was in the packet. I can't find anything, including resident contact or request that we take a second look at it. So I will be in support of it. But thank you, Councilman Hersberg, for clarifying that.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item one, approval to authorize a temporary waiver from the eighty-five percent minimum salary threshold for the hiring of a deputy city clerk.
Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Or?
Got a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Londo. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have discussion from Councilman Godbout.
Yes, I'd like to move to postpone so that council has time to look at and evaluate the salary scale for our deputy clerk position. It's been no secret that I feel we're paying way too much for that position. It was necessary to bring an experienced person on board during a presidential election year when we hired the current deputy clerk. Now that she's retiring, it gives us an opportunity to look at the pay scale for that position. I did a download and I, I'd like to see if we could get a study session on this. But I did a, a download and currently of the ninety communities, ninety-some communities that report into the M M L, Westland has the highest-paid deputy city clerk in the state. And if you look at even within the top ten, this seventy percent salary still would put our deputy clerk in the top ten across the state of those communities. So I'd like to postpone this so that we can have a study session and have a conversation on, you know, just what the pay scale and pay plan for the deputy clerk's position should look like.
Hey, there's a motion on the floor from Councilman Godbout to postpone this item. Is there support? Is there support? Is there support? Councilwoman Green, are you raising your hand in support of the motion? Are you raising your hand just?
I'll support the motion. Council President, I'll support the motion just for purposes of discussion.
Thank you. It's been supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion on this motion to postpone?
Yes, I have discussion.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Green.
My question is through the chair to Clerk LeBlanc. If this motion is postponed, that means that council would, I'm guessing, have a study session between now and our next city council meeting on Monday, July twentieth. How does that impact your office with Sue's retirement? Can you please confirm for the record, what is the date that she is walking out, so to speak, or retiring from her role? And how does that impact your office with the primary election?
Sue's last day as deputy clerk will be August seventh. In terms of impact, I think it will have significant negative impact. And if allowed to expound on it, I will. But I have been searching since February, since the end of February, when Sue first notified me for a suitable candidate. And I know that suitable is a subjective term. But of the four deputy clerks and the two city clerks that I approached, even with the generous compensation package that the city of Westland offers, which is comparable to a whole set of employees in the city of Westland, I still could not get anybody to accept it for various reasons. And Sue's last day, as, as mentioned, is August seventh. I will tell you that had I not brought this particular item before the council, had I simply made as I am afforded the ability to do, an appointment, I doubt that we would even be talking about this right now. But the person that I have selected to become the next deputy city clerk has been working on her own time with Sue, both before work and after work, as well as planned vacation days in an effort to get up to speed as soon as Sue walks out the door. And, you know, I know that's not going to be good enough for a lot of people and it, it certainly won't be good enough to have her walk right into the position, but she has a lot of time invested in this as well. And respectfully, I'd ask the council to not support this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I, I have a comment and clarification from Mr. Fawcett as well. So to my colleagues, this agenda item isn't to approve the replacement deputy clerk. This agenda item is simply to reduce the pay below what the statutory income of this position is going to be. If we move or postpone or even deny this, the clerk still is within his right to hire this person and then would have to pay them the eighty-five percent instead of the seventy. And that's what's being asked of us today. So I just want to clarify that and Fawcett, if I stepped, put my foot in my mouth, please correct me.
Council President, I think you've accurately characterized the motion that is before the city council.
Thank you. I, too, have two hands raised. I think one's Councilman Godbout. Did you have other discussions, sir?
Just in light of that, I can withdraw my motion to postpone.
Peter supported that. Are you okay with that, Peter? I see nods up and down. Okay, so we're going to show that motion is withdrawn.
I, I would ask Council President that the second or verbally state in, in light of the virtual meeting as compared to a head nod, which, you know, or a thumbs up I'd normally take, but if the council member wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I wish I had my support of that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Green, we're back to the original motion now. So the motion to move has been withdrawn or postponed, excuse me. So we're back to the original motion. I see your hand raised. So do you have other discussion?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I have several questions regarding this recommendation, many of which have been documented in the email that I sent last week, Monday on June the twenty-ninth, I believe. During the meeting tonight, Clerk LeBlanc stated that he has known about Sue, who was the deputy clerk. He has known about her upcoming retirement since February. That is approximately a five-month period. During that five-month period, this job was not posted publicly, which would have allowed Clerk LeBlanc to secure not only an extremely qualified person, but not be down to the wire to make a recommendation from the person who would, who works with. a recommendation from the person who would, uh, who works within City Hall, the only person who's willing to take a job that pays above one hundred thousand dollars a year, um, we're down to this one particular person, um, so I find that fact that, go ahead.
Councilwoman Green, I, just respectfully, um, I, I hear your point, but the, the agenda item specifically is for reduction of pay, not for his appointment, and the discussion that we're offering right now needs to be relative to that specific topic, so if you want to address that item a little bit more, try to do it during your comments section.
Council President Hart, I'm very aware of what this item is regarding, I actually read the packet before our meeting, so I'm gonna continue my discussion, thank you, uh, again, the clerk waited a period of five months and did not post this job on any of the, um, mainstream, uh, job sites, uh, that could have retained a very qualified person for the city of Westland, the prepo, the proposal, again, Sue makes more than one hundred thousand dollars per year, so it has been proposed, the clerk is proposing that we pay, I believe her name is Shannon, that we start her at or above a starting salary of seventy-one thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars, um, effective August the eighth, or excuse me, August the tenth, she will get a salary increase, uh, at or above seventy-one thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars, and effective November the eighth, her salary, excuse me, November ninth, her salary will go from seventy-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to above eighty-seven thousand dollars roughly, now, when we talk about experience, and this is all public information, resumes can be foiled, um, so this is public information, the experience of, and I'm sure Shannon is a very nice person, but, um, as I stated in my email, the city of Westland has exercised a historical and systemic practice of hirings that scream of nepotism, and those that do not promote diversity, but instead employ the friends and family of the people already connected to or employed by the city of Westland, so, and I'm not saying that Shannon is one of those, um, she fits that bill, what I am stating is that prior to Shannon's employment with the city of Westland five years ago, Shannon's employment history included, um, being a, a stay-at-home full-time parent until two thousand and twelve, um, she worked as a nanny, and also a, a preschool teacher at a daycare center, now, we are proposing, without posting this job publicly, to not only find a qualified person, which we could have done over the last five months, we're going to turn around and pay this person who has only worked in positions with the city in five years as entry-level, um, administrative positions, including cashier and acc, uh, account, uh, payable clerk, those are entry-level administrative positions, so, um, to say that we're going, we're proposing paying her less than Sue is reasonable for us to give her this type of money when the city refused to post this job and find a suitable candidate, and, and, um, we see this in the mayor's administration, we get like two weeks' notice, and we're, if it's not a contract, it's some type of employment situation, and now here we go coming out of the clerk's office, I, I think Shannon could be a very nice person, but to pay, start her above seventy-one thousand dollars, and to, to top her off at almost ninety thousand dollars with no relevant experience other than the administrative work she's done for the city with no prior experience before working for Westland, is, is absolutely absurd, um, and so I, as I stated in my June, uh, twenty-ninth email, due to the timing of the upcoming election and Sue's departure, I am inclined to support this solely and aptly on a two-year basis, I will only do so, and if and only if Clerk LeBlanc agrees to post this position to the general public and make it available for interview, opening up the opportunity for employment to the most qualified person who worked for the city of Westland after the election closes, and the comment relative to, well, I could have just done it, and then we wouldn't be talking about it, yeah, you could have, but what makes you different or better than the other people that do that, and, and, and they're put under a microscope, or, or they're called to the carpet for not following the process, or for employing their friends and family and creating positions in our city at the taxpayers' expense, what makes you any, what makes this any different? So I will, I will only support this due to the crunch that we have found ourselves in, due to a five-month period of not actively or proactively recruiting, which we should have been for a senior executive seat, and the deputy clerk is a senior executive six-figure paid seat, there is no excuse for that, so I will make a motion that this line item be revised to include a, a, a requirement that the clerk post after the election ends on November the ninth, the date that, um, Shannon will be, make close to ninety thousand dollars, I make a motion that the clerk be required to post this position publicly and go through a, uh, interview process that would allow the city of Westland to retain the most qualified and suitable candidate, and if Shannon has decided that, if it is decided after the interview process closes, um, then that's the decision, but until then, this is no different from giving someone a position that they are not, uh, appropriately qualified for, when we have plenty of people in our city who may have more skill set, or maybe would have liked to have applied had they known about the position, and I don't believe that this is fair, and I will not, so, so again, my mo, I put a motion on the floor to require the clerk to post this position, uh, publicly, and do a, um, interview process after the, uh, election ends to retain the most qualified city for the city of Westland and our taxpayers.
Is there any support on that motion? Is there any support for the motion? Motion dies due to lack of support, back to the initial motion, is there any other discussion? To McDermott.
Through the chair to the city clerk, would the, um, particular candidate that we are looking, um, with, at this pay plan for, would they be eligible to get certified through the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, and is that something that they would be interested in ultimately as a part of the, uh, maybe an incentive for the pay plan?
Yes, Councilman, actually, I have a fairly detailed, uh, commentary prepared, of course, I, I didn't expect that one of our employees would get that type of acknowledgement during this meeting, but yes, uh, not only has the person selected to be the next deputy clerk been working for our city clerk department as an election official since two thousand seventeen, they've already attended training on their own, they are already a member of the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, they already have attended, uh, activities that help them to perform in the way that they do for us already, they have experience in our office, admittedly, not day-to-day, but during elections, and to be very forthright, I'm no different than other department heads, we rely on people that have certain expertise, the mayor has hired directors that have certain expertise, or appointed, I should say, I'm trying to do the same to get an election administrator, and so, it's the long way of saying, yes, the candidate that I've selected to become the next city, Westland Deputy City Clerk, will in fact be, uh, availing themselves of opportunities through the state to become certified.
All right, next we have, uh, Councilman Londo.
President Hart, I'd just like to move to call the question to vote.
Question has been called, is there support?
Support.
Sorry, who's supported, I couldn't see.
I supported.
Councilman Gabo supported, uh, motion to call, roll call.
Councilman Gabo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
By a five-to-two vote, two-thirds, the motion passes.
Now vote, roll call on the motion.
Councilman Gabo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Due to the hiring practices, no.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes, and I thank you all. New business, item two, approval to accept letter of intent from Danielle Stracken to express her interest in participating on the soon-to-be-formed Marijuana Review Board.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Question by Councilman Londo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Gabo, is there any discussion? Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Council President Hart, the agenda says that this is your recommend, you, you added this to the agenda, can you please clarify if this is, uh, your recommendation to add her, or who, who's recommending that she be added, is this the mayoral appointment?
Councilwoman Green, these are, so if you remember, the Marijuana Business Review Board has three people on them, yep, so this would be one of the council appointees, so Danielle Stracken sent me an email, and I put that in the agenda packet, so she sent me the email, her letter of interest, as well as her resume, so we put it forward on the agenda.
Okay, um, can you please, um, just, uh, bring me up to speed, I thought the ordinance stated that the mayor would suppo, uh, appoint one person, and then it would be two city council members, not outside appointees, so is it outside appointees that you, you all are going to?
Sure, and I'll comment on it in a minute, uh, the Attorney Fosson wanted to chime in, so I'm gonna let him answer that real quick.
Yeah, just, uh, for council's recollection, the Marijuana Review Board sits, uh, three members, two members are city council members or their designees, so as proposed, this would be one of the two, uh, city council slots, uh, by, uh, appointing a designee to that slot, uh, the mayor also has one appointee to that, uh, review board, I don't believe that that appointment, uh, has, has been made, so that's what, uh, this is, as I understood, uh, this item, it was filling one of the two city council spots.
Correct, so Danielle would be one of our, Ms. Stracken would be one of our appointees or our designees as, for council.
Uh, through the chair to, uh, council pre, or, um, City Attorney Fosson, was the ordinance written to give city council the ability to, uh, decide to appoint an outside, uh, person to that board, because I, I specifically remembered during discussion that the mayor was going to appoint someone, and it was two city council members, so I'm just wondering about the verbiage, do we have the flexibility to remove a city council person, is it written in such a way that says that, that council can decide either or?
Yes, it is, it is written for city council appointee, two city council members or their designees, uh, during the discussions, uh, a number of council members were not sure that, uh, city council members would want to sit on the Marijuana Review Board, or that there would be problems, uh, that could be voiced, so the flexibility was written into the ordinance specifically at the request of the city council.
Okay, thank you, um, and, and then my, uh, final question is through the chair to President Hart, since you are recommending Danielle for the, um, the Marijuana Review Board, which is going to be the board that oversees a billion-dollar industry, a multimillion-dollar contracts, can you please state for the record what your, um, belief is that would make her a suitable candidate, to be one of two suitable candidates to represent the interest of, uh, city council?
Sure, uh, Mr. Fosson.
Before you answer that to Council President, let me just clarify, uh, and remind the audience that all ultimate license decisions go to city council, so city council will actually make all the final licensing determinations, the Marijuana Review, uh, Board is to deal with questions which may come up during, there's a selection committee, uh, of three administrative appointees, so, so decisions that may come out of that go up to the Marijuana Review Board, but ultimately, it is, it is city council that makes, uh, the final decision regarding the, uh, um, business operations that, uh, the council member mentioned.
Thank you, Council, uh, Attorney Fosson, and I, I think the public is clear on that, as was I, but they will still represent the interest of city council, so my question is actually very relevant, if a member of city council is removing, um, a, an appointment seat by a, an elected member of city council, and they want to put someone on the out, and I technically say outside, because they were not elected by the community, for the sake of transparency, uh, for the voters, um, I think it is very, um, you know, relevant to, to, to speak to why this person, uh, should receive one of two seats that city council would have held, and also, they will do more than answer questions, uh, with all due respect, Attorney Fosson, you answer questions, and you're our city attorney, so they actually will do more than just answer questions, they are going to represent the interest of the city of Westland and city council, so I would like to know, um, the, the, um, the, uh, the reasoning, uh, not that, that I'm against it, I, but I, I think it's, it's, um, very, uh, relevant to, 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 uh, this person being appointed to a board that is over a multi-billion-dollar industry, and will, will assist with the distribution of multimillion-dollar contracts, so I, I pose my question again to Council President Hart, thank you.
No problem, so, uh, love to answer it, uh, first thing, it's my personal belief, this is me, uh, I don't think any council member should be on the Marijuana Review Board, uh, it's my personal belief that it puts us on too many different steps along the process that I think needs to be handled along the way, checks and balances need to be maintained, it'd be my desire that we, uh, appoint both of these positions to someone not on the council externally, and that's my personal desire, so I'll address that real quick, uh, secondly, uh, with regards to Danielle, I've known her for a number of years, as well as a couple other people in the community, she's been active, she's served in a number of different, uh, communities, uh, she's been a member of the JCs, she works really well with the bank, and she's a, she's a resident of this community, and she wants to be involved, and she pays a lot of attention, I, I've been, uh, always, uh, very impressed with her work ethic and her, uh, responsibility, and I, she asked to be on this, she sent me the letter, and I says, I'll move it forward, so that, that's pretty much how it went, and that's, uh, in front of you all for consideration, and, and when she did say that she wanted to do this, I said, I think it's important that you send a letter of intent, as well as your resume, so that I could put that in there, so any of the council members, if they wanted to reach out to you too, before then they could, so, there you are, that's my position.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? And Hersberg.
Thank you, and thanks, Councilwoman Green, you, uh, asked some of the same questions I had, uh, I will not be in support, um, I think this needed more conversation, perhaps in the study session, uh, this whole process has already come under a lot of scrutiny, it's gonna continue to come under scrutiny, I don't think it's a good idea to be, uh, appointing former acquaintances or friends, um, nobody had reached out to me regarding this appointment, I think if council's gonna make two appointments, we should make them both at once, and some of the back and forth between Councilwoman Green and the Council President, this is conversation that perhaps should have been done at a study session before we move forward with appointments, so I'll not be in support, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Okay, I'll have my comment. I appreciate both Councilman Green and Councilman Hersberg's questions and opinions. Duly respected. Didn't call a study session on it, because never before have we ever had a study session about an appointment to anybody in a board. So if that's something that you feel strongly about, we can talk about doing that for. We've just, we've never done it before, not in my history. So usually what happens is someone puts their information in there, and we deliberate over it, and you guys had the opportunity to reach out to Danielle and talk to her. So, but I respect your opinions. Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item three, approval of voucher.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Question by Councilman Londo.
Support.
Support by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Steve Smith. I can't, there he is. Sorry, you know, when we meet in person, I usually can catch you before the meeting if I have a couple of questions. But I just want some clarification on water and sewer fund on page fourteen. There's three items for water refunds. If you could just touch on what the reasoning for the refunds are, and if you know offhand if these are commercial or residential properties. Thank you.
So through the chair, these are refunds either on overpayments on someone's water bill. If someone's closing on a house, sometimes the title company makes a payment, and the new homeowner makes a payment. So there would be a need for refund. So that happens actually quite often, and you'll see them on the vouchers. I think on the ones that are on today's Greenwood Villa, obviously, you know where that is. So that's not a residence. But I think the other ones are residents that are on there today. So. And sometimes, sometimes also what happens is if we had overestimated the account, and then we got an inside reading, that would create a refund situation as well. So.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We now move to comments from the public. The public is invited to speak for up to three minutes. At this time, are there any questions from the public? I have the first hand raised from a Mr. C. Broadbent.
Hi, it's actually Kathy Broadbent.
Very good. Kathy, your time begins now.
Okay, this is through the chair to the police chief. I wanted to know how many thousand-dollar fines were issued over the week from June twenty-ninth to July fourth for those lighting off fireworks while under the influence of alcohol or drugs?
Through the chair, you want me to answer that?
Well, Kathy, do you have any other questions? Maybe the chief can answer them all at once, or is that just the only question you have?
Yep, no, I have three or four. I wanted to know how many thousand-dollar fines were issued since January first for lighting off fireworks outside of the approved ordinance times, which are very limited now, other than that full week of Fourth of July. Also, there was a rather large fireworks display in Westland on Bayview. Was this approved by the city? It was an exceptionally dry few weeks, and I wanted to know if there was consideration of fire hazards. Also, how the police chief plans to handle fireworks that are lit off on days other than those approved in the ordinance, because at least in my neighborhood, which is not the Bayview neighborhood, they go off since April nightly. And I also wanted to commend the police chief for the police officers handling their professionalism and handling calls from residents like me.
All right, Chief, do you want to take a swing at all the fireworks issues? I know everybody's upset about it, so I guess we'd all love to hear an update for whatever you got.
Yeah, in regards to those statistical questions, I don't have those answers right now. If you want to send me an email at jjedrusik@wlpd.net, I'd be happy to look it up for you and give you that answer. But in regards to, you know, how we're going to enforce them, you know, we we're issuing tickets when we can. We actually ran dedicated cars through this whole Fourth of July season for the days that were outside of the permitted days to shoot fireworks. We issued a number of tickets. I don't have those numbers offhand. Don't think that was the, I'm not sure if there's any other questions. But if you want to send those questions to me in an email, I'd be happy to answer for you.
But I still, could you answer the one about the Bayview fireworks display?
Oh, that one, you know, I'm gonna have to maybe ask the city attorney about whether or not a permit is even needed for that. It's a legal time to shoot off the fireworks. It's within the state law.
Yeah, they had ten thousand dollars worth of fireworks. And the pictures on social media showed a very large, long display of fireworks.
So through the chair, there is not a city process to request a permit for, and I don't believe the city clerk processed any such permit to authorize a such a large display of fireworks. So I, really nothing more we can say from our end of it as the local municipality.
I heard that they got approval to block off the street for twenty minutes.
Kathy, maybe we can try and address it a little bit more. I'm sure that the chief doesn't have the answer for it right now. So we could probably take a look. If you email the chief, I'm sure he'll be able to address that, look into it, anything else that you need to get an answer for.
Okay, and I did want to also commend Councilman Hersberg. I actually live in that area with the the property land split that's going on. And it is actually Carousel that's part of it as well. And, you know, you are right on. People did pay a premium for those lots. And I'm very appreciative that you did vote no.
All right, thank you, Kathy. We're out of time for you right now. But again, please email the chief, okay?
Will do.
All right, next up, we're gonna try and stick to our time here. It's hard for me to play with this timer on the phone and then the computer and everything else. So next up, we have Pastor Pruitt. And again, before you begin, Pastor, again, just for anybody who's got questions, it's usually the back and forth thing is really difficult to manage. So it's really helpful to not only me, but also the person you're asking questions to, to kind of answer them all at once. And they can either answer it right now, or they can answer it during their comments. And that's been the standard procedure, and it's really helpful if everybody kind of does it that way. So Mr. Pruitt, are you there? I see your picture.
I am here. I am troubled that policy dictates that it can be stopped and going, but I will do my best. I'm going through each council member with three specific questions. So I'll do that very quickly. Starting with, through the chair to Councilwoman Green. In a meeting with Mayor Wild, Mayor Wild stated that he is willing to seek the Ethics Commission under the authority vested with his office. But he stated that he wants to work with the council to seek the commission. Do you support or oppose seating the already established more than thirteen-year vacant Ethics Commission? Number two, do you support or oppose a diversity specialist being implemented to in an effort to provide responsible suggestions to acquire the goal of diversity? And three, do you support or oppose establishing a seating of Citizens Oversight Commission?
Thank you, Pastor Pruitt. To answer your question, seating an Ethics Commission, I was present for that meeting, and the mayor did say that he would like to work with city council to seat an Ethics Commission. I absolutely and one hundred percent support that, and I have been asking that that rule that is already documented be followed since I got elected. And many were asking for it since it was disbanded after Judge Cicirelli took office. Your second question was a diversity specialist? Absolutely. I think that there are too many occasions that the city of Westland talks about the difficulty in recruiting or increasing racial diversity within our police department. Right now, we're at less than five percent racial diversity, while African Americans and other minority groups, it's estimated that we're at least thirty percent of Westland population. There's only five, less than five percent racial diversity within the police department. There has never been any diversity within the Fire Department. Mayor Wild currently has a nineteen-member administration cabinet, and he has not one African American on his cabinet. And so I think the city in terms of hiring as a whole, I think we should look for the best candidate. But I also think in environments where diversity is wanted and celebrated, you will find it. And in environments when it is not a priority, that's when you will find an absence. You will find it absent. And I can't remember your last question. Citizens Commission Oversight Committee? Absolutely. None, we answer to the citizens. You all voted for us. And the misconception and the misconception that public officials have is once we're seated, we have the power. You all put us in office. Every check we get is your tax dollars. And if we don't feel that we should be held accountable, then we shouldn't be, you, first of all, you should stop voting for us. Secondly, we shouldn't be in office. So if we don't want to be held accountable by the citizens, then that speaks loudly to what may or may not be going on in our city. So I'm in support of everything that you have.
Through the chair to Councilman McDermott, same three questions.
Yes, so Pastor, we've had some of these discussions before, and I thank you for being, you know, a part of the dialogue here. I think it's really important. Yes, myself and several of my colleagues, I know Councilwoman Green has brought this up, Councilman Hersberg as well, in regards to the Ethics Board. It's something that we've brought up several times during our council comments, and something that I've had the chance to even talk with people in the administration about. So I think that's something that there's some, quite a bit of common ground on. Point number two, yes, a diversity specialist, depending on how we structure, if we're making that a paid position, I mean, obviously with our budget, we have to be cautious of that. But obviously, it's something that I think having someone from the outside, you know, look at our hiring process as somebody who works in human resources and is a recruiter. You know, I have some base knowledge on the hiring process, but bringing someone in to help us with that, I think could be a positive. And yes, in regards to a citizen oversight board, we've had that discussion. That is something that I'm in favor of as well. But again, I think that's going to require more balance and working with the police department, working with members of the administration, working with council. So I think we can, if we sit down at the table and discuss this, and, you know, maybe have a study session over this, I think this is something that we can get a lot more fruitful dialogue when we bring everyone into the conversation as opposed to just here on a, you know, Zoom, Zoom conference. But yes, I do support it. So thank you.
Thank you. Through. Pastor Pruitt, Pastor Pruitt, I'm gonna, it's been three and a half minutes, quite a while.
My speaking has not, unfortunately.
I understand, I understand. But I have residents that are also waiting to ask other questions. Is it not fair to let the council members just answer your questions during their comments, so it's fair to everybody?
Will they agree to answer them?
Whether they, it looks like everybody's nodding up and down. I mean, whether they agree to answer now or they agree to answer later, that's their decision. I can't.
That would be fine. I do have one final question, and it's not for them.
Order, you are not following policy. If a council member would like to refuse to answer the question, they can say, I am refusing to answer the question. But per council policy, every resident has a right to ask us questions, and their time is supposed to stop while we answer and restart. It is unfair to allow certain residents that privilege, because I've seen it be afforded to several residents who are saying certain things in support of what is desired to be supported in the city. So I think it is unfair to do that to certain people. So they can say, I refuse to answer, or they can say, I answer during my comments, to tell him whether they do, they'll answer during the comments, and then say, well, if they do, they don't. That is so, that comment so lacks integrity for somebody who was, who's been out advocating for positive changes in our community, and he's a pastor. So I think that we need to stick to policy and be consistent. Thank you.
So can I continue?
Well, I, I'll just apologize to the residents waiting ahead right now. So I guess we'll just move along, and people want to respond, they'll respond, and I'll keep hitting, stopping, and starting the time.
I appreciate it. Through the chair to Councilman Hertzberg, same three questions.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Yeah, obviously, I've talked about an Ethics Committee several times. I think that's really important. That, out of these three, I think that's number one that we got to get moving on. You know, I think having an Ethics Committee would deal with some of the other issues that you have brought up. So the answer is yes. Obviously, in regards to establishing a new Citizens Oversight Commission, that would require some research and what things would go and not go in the ordinance. But I am open to further discussion on all of these items. Thank you.
Through the chair to Councilwoman Rakowski. Same questions.
Good evening, Pastor Pruitt. Thank you for being in attendance this evening and asking us these questions. I also would like to recognize you for the protesting that you have been doing and calling to action. So question one, the Ethics Committee. You know, if it's, if there's committees that are part of our ordinance or our charter, they are to be filled. The Ethics Committee is mayorally appointed, and he should do so. Do I support or oppose a diversity specialist? I support diversity in and of itself. Finding a suitable employee to fill that role may take time. But as Councilwoman said, if we look for them, we shall find them. So I think that's a good thing. I would like to almost see that person come in as an oversight. You know, I don't know if there's additional ways. That way, when they are educating the different departments on diversity, instead of just focusing, because I'm not sure what focus that person will start at. So we need to have all of the department heads read in on best practices for diversity. And then you asked about the Citizens Oversight Committee. I am a fan of citizens oversight. You know, I think it's always important that people feel heard. You know, there's a misnomer that when we say citizens oversight, that these people are making decisions. Really, what they're calling to action is best practices and bringing solutions. And that's very important. Solutions need to be part of the conversation. You know, I had looked into several of your Westland six, which these are three of. And it's very much so in line with my brother's keeper program that President Obama spearheads, and I'm very well read on that. And I would like to see us be part of that. So again, thank you, Pastor Pruitt. And yes, I'm in support of those three actions.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you so much. Through the chair to Councilman Galba.
Yes, thanks. Yes, I'm obviously in favor of seating the Ethics Commission. I helped author the Ethics Ordinance back when it was passed by city council. And that took place after numerous study sessions. Not as many as what we had for the marijuana business. But there were several study sessions in crafting the Ethics Commission. And in saying that, I think you're next to the diversity specialist and Citizens Oversight Commission require more dialogue than just a yes and no answer. And to try and sit here and say, yes, I'm in favor of it, be a feel-good for everybody, or no, I'm not, and to get everybody upset. It's a, it's something that needs to have far more dialogue. There sound like great concepts, but there's no meat with it. And until we have a meaningful discussion on those topics, guessing a yes or no answer is not something I'm going to do. guessing a yes or no answer is not something I'm going to do.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Longdow. Same question, please.
Through the chair to Pastor Pruitt. Kind of the same answer as a lot of my colleagues say. Obviously, I'm in favor of all three. The Ethics Commission is an important commission in the community that obviously needs to be filled. That is a mayor appointment that, I believe it requires council approval. But it is a mayor appointment. So I'm in support of that. As far as the diversity specialist and, you know, the next two, the next two items, that and the Citizen Oversight Commission, as Councilman Galba just alluded to, you know, I think it's going to require a lot more dialogue and discussion. We just wrapped up six to eight budget sessions, and none of this stuff was talked about. We are talking about doing some, some visiting sessions or long-term planning. Maybe that's something we, we obviously put at the top of that list and talk about for our, our future budget. But I serve on a diversity advisory board at my, my day job. So I think it's extremely important to be a part of diversity and to instill that culture and inclusion within your city. So I hope that answers your questions.
It does. Thank you. And through the chair to Council President Hart. Same question, please.
Yeah, not a problem. The Ethics Committee, we've all called. I think all seven of us council members are in unison that we want the Ethics Committee set. We've talked about it. I've supported it. We need, we need it filled, and we need people to apply for it. I've been told that there's no applications in for it too. So if anybody's watching this and they want to serve on the Ethics Committee, start filling out the application online and request. If any of my council colleagues know anybody who wants to serve on the Ethics Committee, let's get those applications in. Challenging everybody, my colleagues and everyone. And if you're interested in serving on the Ethics Committee, let's fill out the applications and get something for the mayor to look at so that we can take it to the next step. So I, I think we've done a lot of complaining about it. I, I think that's how this council can actually take action on the Ethics Committee, is implore people to fill out and get the ball moving. So we can go ahead and tee that up, filling it out. With regard to two other items, Pastor Pruitt, Councilman Galba nailed it. I'd love to say yes, but I mean, I just need to, we need to have more dialogue. There's a lot more conversation that needs to be had about that. I, I have no problems with them on the surface, and it's, it sounds great. But, you know, understanding a little bit more about what those things look like and how we do that and where it fits, and that's important too. So don't like to make a short decision in the middle of a council meeting being asked like that when I think there's a lot more conversation we can have on those items and figure out what makes sense. It, it might look like the solution maybe is an outside firm consulting that specializes in one thing or the other. You never know. So it, it's something we would just have to talk and look at. So support them from a, from a feel-good perspective and it kind of being the right thing to do. But just kind of understanding how you put those things in motion and actually make them real is a little bit different. So I, I think just, again, more dialogue is needed there.
Thank you. And this is my final question. Through the chair to Deputy Mayor Michael Ready. This is a separate, different question. You have a Facilities Director, Vic Barra, who is under you all's command. He has posted a citizen's address online in the midst of a public post more than 5,000 people. How do you plan to address that?
Through the chair to Pastor Pruitt. I'm, I'm not a social media person, so I'm unaware of, of what you're referring to. But if you could please email the mayor's office tomorrow with your concerns, and we could look into it at that point. Thank you.
All right. So we'll go ahead and move on. The next question I have, or comment, excuse me, I have is from Blake. See your hand raised. Blake, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, and you have three minutes. Go ahead, Andy.
Okay, hey, how y'all doing? Let's say hi, everybody. The police is that, the person with the autism on issue. I know that I have been talking with many council members and other elected officials, state reps, state students, congressmen to lead. I think that the commission is having problems. I'm looking at my policy experience and things that I've done leading public policies platforms. And I think the issue with the person who has a disability could have been looked at differently if there were more representatives on the Disability Commission. No disrespect, but the commission is all Caucasian people with disabilities. And in my leadership, I have led diverse, diverse teams that have dealt with policy issues, dealing with state as well as Washington DC. So I really believe that we're at a point to where maybe we have people that are leading. And maybe could, I mean, maybe it's more people that can take those responsibilities. I believe going back and forth, being a person living in Westland, going back and forth to Lansing, as well as being sent back and forth to DC to talk about policies. I believe that I, in a very diverse person and working that for the issue with the person with the disability is a really big concern to me. And I think that we have to really look at all commissions being diverse. I think there should be a person with a disability on all the commissions. So I just wanted to leave that out. And I just want to say thank you for giving me this moment to speak. I'm done.
Thank you, Blake. Next, we have Ashley Stevens. Ashley Stevens, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me the full three minutes as you wanted to cut off Pastor Pruitt. I wanted to thank Tasha Green for calling out President Hart on that as well. This question is for Police Chief Jeff Jerusalem. Your former police officer, Christopher Landis, was fired for brutalizing an autistic African-American man in January. And I want to know, where's the accountability? Why wasn't he arrested for assault or attempted murder or anything of that nature? Why was he only fired? That's the information I have. Can you please, through the chair to Jeff Jerusalem, give some light on that?
Chief, did you want to comment now or later?
I can wait until she's done with all of her questions. I'm making a note here.
Okay.
And then also, I would like to ask about what are you guys doing to supplement the education for children on racism and diversity in our city? That one is through the chair to Jim Hart. President Jim Hart, because since you're the president, you should be knowing all of these things of how we're going to educate our children and to engage them. And so Westland will not be a city that will tolerate racism. So I want to know, through the chair to Jim Hart, what you're going to do in regards to educating the children?
I'll answer that during my comments.
Okay, well, those are my two questions.
Chief?
Okay, through the chair. So the best way to answer the question about the officer is that, as a police chief, my power is to, to hire and fire. And we conducted an internal investigation regarding that incident, that officer. And as a result of that internal investigation, the officer was fired. There is currently a criminal investigation that is taking place by an outside agency. The Wayne County Prosecutor's Office is doing that. It's going to be up to Kim Worthy's office on making the decision of whether or not what happened qualifies to criminal charges. That we have to wait and see what her office decides.
All right. And I'll address your questions during my council comments at the end. All right, next up, we have Ms. Sedman. Denise Sedman.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, Denise. I can hear you. Go ahead.
Council President Hart, I would like to make a comment to the police chief, Jeff Jerusalem, that I had a problem where there was somebody in our neighborhood stealing plants and stealing furniture. And I happened to catch the person on my porch. I didn't actually, I saw her on my porch and had a picture of her from my porch camera. And Christopher Richardson came out. And I wanted to say and let everybody know, he was very professional. He did an excellent job of handling my situation. And I found out that you found the porch pirate and that the social media, the Tri-County Crime and Facebook, those two, and Nextdoor Digest, those two websites really helped find the person because there was more than just my neighborhood that was hit. And then the other thing that really touched me was my neighbor across the street, he died in his home, and there was no family to contact. And that was, oh geez, maybe about four months ago. And the officer asked how things were going with, if they found the family and how that all went. So I found that very nice that he remembered our neighborhood and remembered our residents. So that's what I wanted to give you a compliment.
All right, Denise, thank you. Next, we have questions from Mr. Asper. Mr. Asper, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me? It's my first time using this.
Yep, I can hear you now. You have three minutes.
Awesome. Um, okay, I'm not, I'm, my main concern is I wanted to speak about the governor's executive order. I know there's been other municipalities that have defied it legally, of course, as well as other counties. Now, I know, and I have evidence of it as pictures and witnesses. I know the city of Westland during the time was building a property on Emerson in Westland. It's a property in Norway. This was before the construction was allowed. I also know, I mean, there's, there was the clothing charity column that was picking up, you know, their clothes at the bins, which was also against the executive order at the time. I don't care about any of that. My main, well, I do care about it. But my main concern is what, maybe this is for W. Mayor Ready. But would Mayor Wild be willing to open up the city? We've already seen many businesses, mainly restaurants, go out of business. I'm just, I'm very, very concerned about that, especially when we don't know how long this is going to last. That was my main thing. The second thing, I wanted to thank the fire chief. I'm sure he knows I have a, some rental properties, and his firefighters came out to Deerfield a couple of times within the last like six months, and I never got to thank him directly. So I want to say thank you. No, that's it.
Deputy Mayor, do you want to answer things now or wait till comments?
Real briefly, Council President, the city's been open fully since July 1st. A, a couple of the buildings have been partially open. But even through the whole COVID crisis, we had essential employees at City Hall working and working with the residents. But we've been open for the public for quite some time now and will continue to be open. Thank you.
Thank you.
That didn't quite answer my question. My, my question was, it was a statement. He, the city of Westland owns a property on Emerson. During this time, even before construction was allowed, the city of Westland, through a charity or whatever program it was, was building this house. I have pictures. I have before pictures. I have after pictures. I have about 10 witnesses. I mean, I'm not talking about City Hall at all. But why is the city doing these things and violating the executive order themselves while they are in, I don't want to say enforcing, because that's the Attorney General? But why isn't the mayor just opening the whole city up? That's, that's all I want to know. Why are you, why, why is the city breaking the rules themselves but doesn't allow other people to do so? And that, that's it. Thank you.
All right, next, we'll move to Mr. Seidel or Larry Seidel. Seidel, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Larry, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great, thanks. Yes, Larry Seidel, and I appreciate the time. I'll be very brief. You and I spoke earlier, and, and I just have a question. I'm not sure who the correct person to answer it is. But we submitted an application for a temporary structure permit back in March before the COVID shutdown. And follow up, as we are trying to schedule our, what is a retail event, but it just falls underneath the temporary structure permit requirements in an existing shopping center. The business is very similar to like a Halloween store where it's just a short period of time in an existing retail space. We followed up on that application and, and learned that it wasn't being considered. And so we resubmitted a new application with new dates that did not meet the deadline understandably for today's agenda. And the, the conundrum I'm in at this point is that we have dates that are hopefully starting this event before your next scheduled City Council meeting for approval. And my question would be, is there any, any avenue or possibility of getting a special consideration from an application that was pre-COVID and, and now where we're trying to, to get into the post-COVID life?
So Larry, I, I got your email as requested, and I forwarded that over to the mayor to see if he could be able to answer that. I mean, Deputy Mayor MJ, do you have anything? I, I encourage you to reach out to Larry too. There's only so much we as a council can do if it's not on our agenda.
Yeah, yeah, Council President, if we could have Mr. Seidel just contact the mayor's office tomorrow. We can put him in contact with Moe and Ralph and see if there's anything we can do on that. So if he can just contact us again tomorrow. Mr. Seidel, it's 467-3200 is the phone number.
3200, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we have phone number ending in 017.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. You have three minutes.
Richard Graham with Move Westland Forward. Interesting discussion tonight, especially the Ethics Board. Great to hear that all seven council members are in favor of it, when for so many years, the majority of council didn't say too much of anything about the Ethics Board. Interesting, Council President Hart doesn't seem to recall that, you know, at the podium, at least one citizen stated that they applied for the Ethics Board, never to hear anything from Mayor Wild. I personally heard other citizens that said that they have applied. I don't know that for sure, but I know for sure one resident did. And that resident was at the podium stating so at least one time. So interesting comments. Let's see what happens next. Also, interesting discussion regarding the deputy clerk. Was interesting to, to hear Councilman Godbout raise objection to the pay when, you know, he's voted time after time for lavish raises for the Facilities Director, the Economic Director, increases overall, but raised the objection to that. Almost seemed like an ax to grind. If you're on the, you know, 30,000-foot level, just kind of looking down, observing. Also, however interesting that it wasn't posted. You know, $100,000 a year job with benefits. You know, it might be best practice, might be the best word, that it would be posted. The Economic Director was posted, but, you know, was taken, you know, the position was filled before the posting ever, ever ended. So just interesting. I only have one question tonight. There seemed to be already the person identified at the meeting that was going to be the possible de, new deputy clerk. My only question is, is that person related to the Ready family? And that's my only question. Anybody care the answer? You're answering a lot of questions tonight, which is great. I'm sure somebody out of the one, two, Deputy Mayor Ready is giggling. So I'm sure, I'm sure he can answer the question if, if that person is related to his family. So I guess through the chair to Deputy Mayor Ready. Would you like to go on record to say that whoever this person was, that the deputy clerk, or I'm sorry, I should probably, my apologies, go direct to the source and City Clerk LeBlanc? So interested, that's my only question.
Mr. President, may I respond?
Yes, sir.
The person that will be appointed as the next deputy city clerk, to the extent that I know, is not related to any person that sits on a board, any person that's employed by, any person that has a familial relationship with anyone in the city of Westland. In fact, I've never enjoyed a lunch with her. I've never met her husband. I don't know her son. I know they're very active in town, but there is no nefarious relationship of any. I don't know her son. I know they're very active in town, but there is no nefarious relationship of any sort. I only know her work product and it's excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, are there any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Final call. Any other questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll move over to comments from the administration. MJ?
Thanks, Council President. Just a couple of quick comments. Just wanted to let council and the residents know, as you've seen through the emails and the city's website and social media posts, is that we have, the city has opened some cooling centers this past weekend, and they'll also be open throughout the week. We're gonna be doing them at City Hall from 12 to 8, and the Jeffersons and Burns Community Vitality Center from 12 to 8. We got some stream heat this week, and we did over the weekend. So again, if you could, if you could send those messages out to the folks that you know, to let them know that we have those cooling centers at those two locations. And again, to be good neighbors, if you can reach out to your neighbors and if they're having a problem with their air conditioning or whatnot, if, if you can, but you know, let them know where the cooling centers are. And again, those are 12 to 8 and they're posted on the city's website. Number two for the night would be, just let council and the residents know, all of our city employees now have returned from furlough. It's been a long, three and a half plus months since we implemented the furloughs, but our city employees are back. City Hall is, has been open and in full force. Our outlining buildings are, are back open, and a few of them are still limited in the capacity. For instance, like the senior center, just because we have to limit the, what, what kind of activities go on in there. But our employees are back to work and as of today, everybody's back from furlough. And then just on the library, just wanted to let council and the residents know that they are open, but not to the public. They're, they're open to what they call pickup hours, to where you can contact them and actually pick up materials. You would show up to the library and just kind of go into the waiting area and then they'll bring the, the materials out to you. Their information is posted on the library's website, the city's website, but the hours for whole pickup hours are Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Friday, 10:00 to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So those, that's what is going out of the library. Again, you can look at the website. And I just wanted to wish everybody, I hope everybody had a great Fourth of July, a safe Fourth of July, and just, it was good to see council and everybody tonight. Thank you.
Anything from the attorney's office today?
Council President, two items. One is, as you know, the governor's executive order allowing for virtual meetings to satisfy the Open Meetings Act runs through this month. There is a, again, as I said last month, before the last expiration, there seems to be quite a bit of speculation that that will be extended. So as I watch the executive orders come out, we'll certainly let council know what happens on that particular one, which impacts how you meet. Second, I wanted to comment on the back and forth today in citizens' comments. Clearly, this is the council's meeting and the council's procedures control. Consistency is important, as mentioned by one of the council members. But many times when we've been in the chambers together, I have reminded the public that this is, citizens' comments are just that, to make comments. It is not a deposition. It is not a question and answer period. Council members are, are not, during citizens' comments, they're, they're sort of, if you will, get grilled. So I do think the council has to, in this virtual setting, determine if it's, what methodology it wants to continue to employ if this continues. And, and I think there was a little bit tonight somewhat of a different approach used than has historically been used in the chambers. And it may be as a result of the, the forum that we're working with, but I, I think consistency in citizens' comments would, would help council and the other citizens who are watching and waiting as well. So I just wanted to pass those two items on, that you may be virtual meeting next month as well.
Thank you. Move on to council comments. We begin with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to respond to a couple of the comments from the audience. First comment would be towards you, Council President. Mr. Larry Seidel, I'm not sure of the situation he's in or what business it is. I don't ask for the same situation to happen, or he didn't make the deadline and he just didn't add up.
Councilman Hersberg, you, you just, you broke up and I couldn't understand a thing you said.
Yeah, I have trouble with my internet today. So I wanted to talk to you about Larry Seidel. He mentioned an issue with his deadlines. We do have a special meeting to go on tonight, and I'd be happy to be part of that. If you could update on, yeah. I believe council voted to go to do the block party. They did a block party over there, and they did not need a permit for those fireworks. Those were not commercial fireworks. So I'm not sure, uh, for conversation in the city other than being approved for the block party. Here, everybody wants to do the activity. It was stated that charter says it's a marital agreement. I believe I can change it if you can, if we can change it and examine that, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Councilman Hersberg. You did break up a lot, but I think I picked up some of the gist of what you're saying. And I'll, I'll circle around you, Theo. I think the one thing you did say is we do have the ability to do a special meeting. So I picked up on that. That's something I know it's, it's possible. I just want to make sure that the administration can put something forward that we, is prepared for us to vote on before we call a special meeting, if that's what we need to do. So I, I think let's at the mayor's office work on it tomorrow and see what they come up with, and then they'll let us know if that's something we need to do real quick, especially in this remote environment that we're in right now. I think it's reasonable. Sorry, I didn't mean to comment, but we barely heard the councilman, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Councilman Hersberg. Next, Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Council President. I start by informing the community that the Westland Historic Village Park, which is one of the city commissions, has two open commission seats, and they would love your help. There is a $60 monthly stipend that is paid for sitting on any of our commissions, but that's the commission that holds all of the historic information, the data, the history of the city of Westland, including our residents. And they did a event this weekend, actually on the Fourth of July, honoring one of our residents for her community service during World War II. And it was a really nice ceremony and a, a good turnout as well. So they are in dire need of, of community members to step up and help them maintain the history of our city. So please reach out to them. The boards and commissions are on our city website at cityofwestland.com if you're interested, or you can email any of us if you'd like us to connect you, to be able to submit your information. Secondly, I would, I'd just like to question about a diversity specialist. There was discussion tonight, when the diversity specialist was mentioned, that someone mentioned, well, we have to take a look at our budget. There was other commentary about, there's a lot more conversation and dialogue needed. When the city is awarding multimillion-dollar contracts to campaign donors, when we are giving some of these contractors an increase of 33% more than what they got the previous year, and locking them in with an annual increase of 4%, which no city employee gets normally until this, this last budget. But we don't even give city of Westland employees those type of increases. And there's never any kickback, no cautionary discussion from the same council members who now want to take a look at the budget, you know? But you give away the farm to these contractors, to some of these city employees, when it's time to give the administration an annual increase just because they want one, even though our budget is in the tank, our projection is in the tank. There's no question, no caution whatsoever. So I would urge the city to look at our priorities. When it comes to diversity, we need to, to have more discussion about that. But there is a worldwide crisis going on right now, and people are marching the streets relative to issues directly surrounding the lack of diversity in multiple communities, the lack of the ability in people in positions of power, particularly the police, to interact and recognize African-Americans with an outcome that does not result in anything up to death. So I think that there's a priority issue in the city of Westland. And I think that as the seven elected officials, two repres, at-large elected officials, representing the entire city of Westland, if we can put this on the back burner, I think we need to take a look at what is most important to us. I also think that there needs to, I, I urge the community to look at the hiring practices in the city of Westland. Look at how we're going about appointing certain people, promoting certain people, whether they're qualified or not. In the instance of the deputy clerk position, she is not qualified for that job, in my opinion. Her resume, every member of city council got a copy of her resume, and it, for a, a, a six-figure senior executive seat, while I'm sure she's done good work, do you know how many good working citizens of Westland or, or city of Westland employees or people in the job market who would have liked to have applied and we had five months to do it? So again, our priorities, I urge you to look at some of these appointments. I urge you to look at how we look away when we are promoting friends and family of our own to certain boards that handle millions of dollars. And, and this speaks to, this screams for the need for an immediate ethics committed, commission in the city of Westland, because many of these issues would likely go before an ethics commission. So again, the residents have the power. Please utilize your power to hold us accountable. Regarding the city attorney's comment about consistency in comments and policy during virtual meetings, the city attorney, to, to, in, in my opinion, his comment was more like what you can say in alley-oop, if, if anybody's familiar with basketball terminology. When you alley-oop, you take the basketball and you get it over to the other player and then they slam dunk it in. He alley-ooped, in my opinion, that comment over to the council president. How dare we, due to inconvenience of our own, deny residents, one, the right to enjoy what our policy is. That's number one, because it is policy that if they ask a question through the chair, their time stops. We answer and it restarts. How dare we speak from a, a standpoint of inconvenience when they are simply abiding by the policy that we have documented? And we have let other people come in and speak for extended periods. So to deny the community who put us in office the right to speak according to policy because we're having virtual meetings is a, it is a, it is a disadvantage to the people who put us in office. So I would urge city council to ensure that our residents and the people who put us in office to stand up for their interests are not silenced due to anyone's inconvenience. And I'll move on. Number, I'm sorry. I wanted to let the community know that I submitted a resolution to the council president last week, or was it last week or the beginning of this week? I want to say it was, anyway, in the, in the recent past, I submitted a resolution to the council president that city council will be voting on during the next council meeting on Monday, July 20th. The resolution is to declare racism a public health crisis. If any of you have been following what is going on worldwide, I, I absolutely feel that racism is just as much of a crisis as it is an opioid epidemic and any other crisis that impacts the majority of our residents. There needs to be, now, if we want to talk about where discussion needs to be, we need to have discussion about racism. So I look forward to the dialogue that is yet forthcoming from the city attorney relative to the resolution that I submitted, and hopefully residents will attend the meeting on July the 20th so that they are informed in terms of the decision that our council will make. And finally, on a very positive note, I wanted to inform the community that, those of you who were not aware, I just graduated last week from the Schoolcraft Community College Police Academy. And I've been a long-term member or Wayne County Reserve Sheriff Deputy with the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, and I decided to go through the police academy to take on additional responsibility and to help out the community, especially in light of the, the culture and, you know, the, the, the issues that exist today. And I think in order to make change, you have to have a seat at the table, and you also have to be able to understand the issues from both sides of the spectrum, because the police are not always wrong, and we have a lot of good police. But from an accountability standpoint, until law enforcement, including myself, peel back the layers and hold ourselves accountable and, and, and each other and make the necessary changes, we're going to continue to see the same type of issues we've been seeing. And the world is saying that we're not taking it anymore. And, and so I stand with them. I speak to the, 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 what are, they're being called protesters when, in my opinion, they're not protesters. They are marchers for change or, or people who are, are fighting for change. And so I stand with you. I support you. I've been to protests really all over the metro Detroit area, and I'm going to continue standing for the right thing, because that's what's important, that you put aside your title and your position and you stand on whatever side integrity is, whether it's the side that you would prefer to be on or the side that you need to be on, the side that you committed to be on. So I appreciate everybody who has been standing for peaceful protest, and I look forward to the change that we are getting ready to bring to the, the world. And with that, I say God bless you and I will see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. I'd like to start by first thanking Danielle for stepping forward to serve on the newly created Marijuana Review Board. It's an important role, and I'm, I'm confident she'll do a great job in that position. There's been a lot of comments and a lot of talk and misinformation about the council timekeeping policy. So I will refer to the policy itself, and which, under section 13, it says, "The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to use up their time if they wish to have questions answered at this time. The clock will not be stopped by request once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted." And then under section 14C, this is the time when a clock would stop, is, under 14C, it says, "If the mayor, city council member, or other city official interrupts the speaker and it is not in response to a direct question, then the clock will be stopped and then restarted when the person again is allowed to speak." So hopefully that clarifies, and we don't have any more 15-minute exchanges during the citizens' comment portion, because it's not fair to the other residents that are waiting their opportunity to speak. Thanks.
Councilman Rakowski.
Good evening. Thank you, council. I don't really have a lot to add. I think we've covered a lot of things. I think we have to be diligent of executing our jobs, and that is to I think we have to be diligent of executing our jobs and that is to uphold the policies and procedures, the charter and the ordinances of our city as well as, you know, our broader sense of our state and and federal government. So that being said, you know, when we allow vacancies to continue on for a long period of time, we're not doing our job. So we really have to be diligent in making sure that boards are filled because there is not just that board that it has number of vacancies. There's plenty of them. So perhaps it's a opportunity for us to educate our residents on how they can be active on boards and commissions. So there we go. One thing that I would like to call to the council's attention and and I believe the administration had already planned on doing this, but it's part of the COVID crisis, federal funding and state funding of SB 690, which will give our firefighters, paramedics, dispatchers, police officers the opportunity to receive hazard pay premiums at no cost of the city. So I would be adamant and encouraging the administration to fulfill that responsibility. I know that deadline is kind of tight and that there is a special webinar to make sure that all the i's are dots and t's are crossed on that. I know it's, anytime you ask for federal funding, it gets a little bit dicey. But, you know, if there's money that we can get for our men and women that have gotten us through so far, I think that that's the only respectful thing to do for them. You know, I think it's very important that people continue to attend our meetings and express their feelings and demand for change. Are too long, everything has been status quo, but things have, it's, things can't be kicked down the road, but things take time, too. So, you know, it's really hard to find that balance, that sweet spot of being able to implement new change. And I look forward to seeing that. I look forward to raising my son in a community that is inclusive. And I think, you know, I talked about having vibrant communities when I was elected. And I think that's one of the areas of vibrancy is when we can see past melanin and we can look at one another as brother and sister. And I think that's really important. And with that, I'll see you in two weeks.
Councilwoman McDermott.
Good evening. I'm just gonna preface this by saying I'm gonna be a little long-winded tonight, so I do apologize. Number one, in terms of the deputy clerk's position, I guess, and I don't like to boast about myself, but I guess I'm what you call a hiring expert. I work in recruiting for a living. I work in HR. You know, I believe in diversity in the hiring process. I've worked as a part of the company I work for, it's on communities, being a part of making our team more diverse in Sun, not only at our properties that we own, but also in the workplace. But with that said, companies all the time post positions that unfortunately don't get posted externally. Would I have liked to have seen this particular position get posted externally and be up for a period of time as a recruiter myself, just on a personal level? Yes. As a resident of the city of Westland, yes. But the deputy clerk has found someone that they believe to be extremely qualified for this position, someone that they're going to have to work with in their office day in and day out. I believe that our clerk is is a man of integrity and a man who wants to ensure that the best person is found for the job and someone who can work with him directly and work in our elections process to oversee free and fair elections here in the city of Westland. And I believe that he feels he has found that person and has presented their credentials to us. Again, it's not a perfect world. I think having the position posted externally would have been something I'd like to see, but it is by no means required by law and no means illegal what was done. And so I think that, you know, he feels he's found the best person for the job and we are going to act and vote accordingly based on the information that we are given. Couple of other things here in regards to what Pastor Pruitt brought up. Thank you again for bringing these points out. The Ethics Board is something that seems to have unanimous approval. So I'm glad to see that we're all, you know, on board with that and that we're looking to make some real progress in moving that forward and ultimately getting appointees to the Board of Ethics here in the city of Westland. In terms of the Citizen Oversight Board or Civilian Review Board, whichever name you want to give it, that is something that I do support. I was planning on sending something into the chief and many of my colleagues, but it seems like we don't communicate via email anymore and everything just gets aired out like a smorgasbord here in council comments. But I still plan on sending that email because I think having dialogue that many of my colleagues had mentioned earlier is going to be constructive and important. I think just airing everything out all the time in council comments doesn't get us anywhere and we get a lot of talk and then where's the action? So I think being able to have a study session or being able to have a working group to address these issues, whether it's a citizen oversight board, whether it's reappointing the Board of Ethics, whether it's hiring a diversity specialist, all things I think we're all in agreement on this point. But I think having that action behind the scenes and having constructive dialogue behind the scenes is going to be far more important than just airing our laundry out here every time, every single council meeting and council comment. So I'm excited to actually get the ball rolling on that and have a working group or a study session, whatever we decide on as a council and ultimately with the administration. Just want to give a big shout out to our Economic Development Director Aubrey Berman and also to Dwayne Walker. I had the chance to work with Aubrey and Dwayne directly on the administering the small business grants as a part of the Westline Cares Act funding. I know that prior to myself and Dwayne getting on board, Aubrey did a lot of work to get that program up and running to, you know, not only get the application process going, but then to reach out to small businesses across the city of Westland directly. I know she was going door-to-door talking to business owners here, making sure that they were aware of not only the Cares Act funding, but the necessary qualifications for it and what paperwork they would need to submit. And as she mentioned earlier, we're able to get funding to over 45 businesses here in the city of Westland with the average grant being $5,000. And I think this is going to be something, whether they use it to cover, you know, payroll expenses, rent, I think it's going to help out a lot of small business owners here in Westland and hopefully keep a lot of businesses open. So I really want to thank Aubrey and Dwayne, but in particular, our Economic Development Director Aubrey Berman for the hard work that she did behind the scenes to make that happen. And then two other things real quick. The recycling program has started up here again in the city of Westland. And if you're interested in knowing what you can and can't recycle, as a reminder, Republic Waste Services who we're contracted with has a very handy website. It is recyclingsimplified.com. You can go to to get some more information about what we will and won't be able to recycle here in the city of Westland and whether or not the materials you recycle have to be clean. So again, that is by Republican, Republican, Republic Waste Services at recyclingsimplified.com. And then the final note here that I just wanted to ask, I guess through the chair of the administration. I know that when we first put a plan in place to tackle the the COVID crisis, that we were not going to be having any water shut offs. And I know that that was something that Governor Whitmer had put an executive order in place, but I believe that is set to expire here. And I want to know if that is something that we're going to continue as a policy here in the city of Westland in regards to water shut offs during the COVID crisis. Thank you.
Council President, real quick. Thank, yeah, Councilman McDermott, yes, certainly the city will adhere to that. We generally don't pursue water shut offs anyway, so we're certainly going to adhere to that and make sure that we don't do any water shut offs during the COVID crisis. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Where are we at? Councilman Londo.
President Hart, and thank you to all my colleagues tonight. I thought it was a very productive meeting tonight. Start off with thanking Danielle Strachan for stepping up to express her interest in participating on the soon-to-be-formed Marijuana Review Board. As Councilman Godbell said, it's going to be an extremely important board and we need great people to serve on that board. So thank you, Danielle, for stepping up to serve on that board. And a lot of talk about the Ethics Mission, a lot of talk about the boards and commissions. It seems like meeting after meeting, many of us plead with people to serve on boards and commissions. So while we talk about the Ethics Board, as Councilwoman Rukowski and Councilwoman Green, I believe, mentioned, there are other other boards that are open and available. So once again, for the cityofwestland.com, go to open.gov, the boards and commissions and see what boards are open and apply. It's great to get involved in your community. That's how I started years and years ago on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council, then soon after the Downtown Development Authority. It's a great opportunity to involve in the city, get back to your community and learn a lot as well. So I urge everyone to apply, not only for the Ethics Board, but for all the other boards and commissions that we have. And then Councilman Rukowski talked about SB 690, the hero pay or hazard pay for public safety members. That's something I talked about a long time ago. I believe it was the second meeting in April, April 20th. So I hope the administration is moving forward with that to hopefully get that grant to our hard-working men and women of the Westline Police and Fire Departments. What else do I got here? Also, thank you to Economic Development, the whole department, Aubrey Berman, her staff, Westline Chamber of Commerce. They did a lot of work with the cares grant. I know the fire department was instrumental. The fire marshal division was going out while they were doing their fire inspections. They were giving flyers out to folks, let them know about it. So it was an overall team effort and thank you to Councilman McDermott and Dwayne Walker, Dwayne Walker as well for assisting with the grant process. You know, again, it was a team effort and like the director Berman said, it's not over if you didn't get a chance to get in on that. Wayne County Business Grant is going on again right now. They have over $50 million in small business grants. I participate in a task force each and every Friday with the Wayne County Economic Development Department along with Aubrey Berman and Wayne, Westline Chamber of Commerce. There's a webinar coming up. Just give me a second to open the screen here. It's an Ask the Back in Business Town Hall, a conversation with the experts at the Michigan Small Business Development Center. That's going to be July 22nd at 10:00 a.m. It's an opportunity to learn best practices, ask the experts your questions, get advice regarding your concerns. A lot of other topics on there, but you can register at wayncounty.com/backtobusiness, or excuse me, Back in Business Town Hall. Get back to where I was here. I also had a chance to attend with Councilwoman Rukowski and Mayor Wild, the UAW Solidarity Event. That was, I believe, last Saturday. It was passed there to the Saturday before that. A great rally over at UAW Local 163 on Merriman Road next to Mac Mayfield Municipal, of course. The purpose of the rally was to gather to discuss recent national unrest and response to systematic racism and discuss ways to move forward peacefully. We had great speakers from organizations that are looking for change to fight inequality and justice. It was open to the general public. It was well-attended. I want to thank everybody. It was out there. It was a hot day. Very hot day out there wearing a mask and black top. Super hot. It was for, obviously for an important cause I think we all are, all believe in. I think that's it. The only other thing I have on my list here is I want to thank a couple of residents. I hope I hope there wasn't more than this, but Christina Worm and her son Buster. I saw something on Facebook. They did a big cleanup over at Kaylee Park in the Norwayan Community over the weekend. A great job. I guess there was a lot of trash and debris out there from the Fourth of July holiday, but they stepped up. They always do. They're ambassadors for that community. They spent eight hours out there throughout the day cleaning up four or five bags of trash or 10 bags of trash, forgot what they said. But I want to thank Christina Worm and her son Buster for for doing that. And that's it. Council President, have a great night.
Thank you. I'll start tonight by thanking Councilman Godbell for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And also I'd like to thank Danielle Strachan for stepping up and volunteering to serve in the Marijuana Business Review Board. It's going to get really busy here really soon. So we're looking forward and we're really excited for you lending your talents and your abilities to the city. So thank you. Thank you. Ethics Committee, we've all talked about it. We'll all talk about it again. I'll just say the same thing. You know, we all want to stand behind it, have the Ethics Committee. Please, if you're interested in serving in that or any other board and commission, the information's on the website and how to apply. You can also look at all the other boards and commissions as Councilman Green had stated. And you can see which positions are vacant and which ones are full and when you can apply for them. So please do. The question came up from a resident about educating the children. Quite frankly, I haven't really put thought into that. As a legislator on the city side here, we kind of focus on city legislative issues and had never thought about that. I didn't have a good answer and just kind of sitting here thinking about it, I think the probably the right thing to do is engage the school board, you know, they have the ability and they contact and direct contact with children and education is kind of their thing. So probably partnering with the school school board and the school district would be the right way to do that. And I guess we could have some more dialogue offline about what that looks like. So they are their own separate entity, but we have the ability to work cohesively. I wanted to bring up study sessions. A couple of council members say they want study session for this, study session for that. Just please remember there is a procedure. So it's in our policies and procedures. If you guys want study sessions, so if three of you want a study session, there's just a procedure and compels me to schedule a study session. So one person throws out a study session, you know, just work, work amongst your colleagues and kind of follow the procedure so we can get those scheduled for the ones you really do want. That's all I'm asking. Just follow the procedure so we can get it done. And I think that's all I had for my notes. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for all their comments. All the last thing was, yes, Councilman Green did send us a resolution. So she kind of took the lead on that. Soon as I got back from vacation, it was sitting in my inbox, ready to go. So took that. I trained it over to the city attorney Fosson, who's reviewing it. And I expect to have something back in the next couple of days and kind of take it from there. Also might want to, like I said, you've you've talked to a couple of your colleagues on an individual basis. And I think there might be some ways that they might even want to contribute a little bit, too. So that might be a good way to get all of us involved, or at least a small segment of us involved in it. I think we all care passionately about it. So I think maybe having some additional input, there might be some additional parts we want to put in. So we'll take a first pass at it with Fosson so that it's legit, you know, it's good to go. And then there might be some other things that some of your colleagues want to contribute. So I have an idea. I'll share it with you in a little bit, but I think we can definitely get some progress on that. I'd like to thank everybody for your time. I'd like to thank everybody for dialing in today and being patient as always. With that, oh, there's one other thing. I do apologize. Councilman Hersberg, due to technical difficulties, has notified me that he's clearly not here. He's been unable to reconnect, but he was able to send me a text message only to let me know that he did fall off. And to Kathy Broadbent, who I believe you're still on, he asked me to do him one little favor. He says he has some additional information regarding that permit for that party. So if you could email Councilman, it's at pherzberg@cityofwestland.com. He'd appreciate it. Normally I wouldn't do that, but he did drop off and I just wanted to respect that and have, take care of that for him. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a good evening.